Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education of Monday, October 15th. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mrs. Innes?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
And Mr. Reenie?
Here.
Okay, the next thing we are about to do is we're going to recognize the Vermillion Elementary School Citizens of the Month, and they're going to introduce themselves. They're going to tell us what grade they're in, they're going to tell us their teacher's name, and maybe, just maybe, they're going to tell us what it is they want to be when they grow up. Let me go over and coach them one more time. And I think this is Ryan, and he's going to start us off.
Hi, my name's Ryan. And I'm in first, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Lux, and when I want to be, when I grow up, a teacher.
A teacher? All right, all right. Good job.
My name is Alexia Dudik, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Ling, and I want to be a marine biologist when I grow up.
My name's, my name's Kelsey, and my, and I'm in one grade, and my teacher's name is Mrs. Stripmather. I want to be a teacher.
My name's Julian. What?
And what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Greg.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
A cop.
A cop, okay, all right. Now they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and just a.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the student liaison update, but we're waiting for one of the participants to arrive, so we're going to temporarily hold that and move on to Agenda Item 5, the legislative update. Mr. Reenie?
Okay, well, not a whole lot happening down at the state with the election coming up. One of the things that has been talked about quite a bit is the release of the report card data for all the districts throughout the state. And it's been on again and off again, the Columbus Dispatch put in a request for information because the state had been withholding all of that information pending some investigations of students being absent from school and how different districts were recording that information. But I'm going to turn over to Mr. Pemben, so I don't get it wrong. There is been some release of information. He can fill us in what that is.
Yeah, they still are scrutinizing some of the data, and they did a preliminary release because they knew that school districts were eager to get the results and know whether or not they met what, which rating and which category they fell under. And at this point, or at this time, with the information that was released, we know that it's past the temporary spot where we could notify the staff. We sent an email out to all of our staff, and first and foremost, I want to thank our teachers for the effort that they put in for us to get the rating of excellent on the report card. This is the second time that our district has gotten that rating in the history of Vermillion schools, and the performance index was at its highest rate ever of 98.4. We met 25 of the 26 indicators. Our test scores, for the most part, rose in almost every category. We still have work to do. We still have, though, talked as a board and with my goals to say that we need to use the success maker data, constant assessments, use the continuous improvement plan that were, or the Ohio Improvement Plan process that has been laid out by the state to help us improve. So it's definitely good news, but we don't consider it the end-all, be-all news, as you know, for our district. We're looking beyond that. We're very happy that the staff, the teachers have worked hard. They deserve the laurels and the credit for the race and the scores that we've had. So without getting into too much detail at this point, we did meet the, we did not meet annual yearly progress, which will be problematic for us next year because that would be the third year in a row that we would not have met adequate yearly progress, not annual, sorry. We did meet value added, though, which is a year's growth for a year's worth of academic progress. So it all becomes complicated in the way that it's calculated, and what we probably need to do is put out a video, possibly spend 10 to 15 minutes at a board meeting in the future, trying to make sure that we let the community know how that works, hold future board meetings. This is another one of those cases where you cannot communicate enough how things work and how they're established. So there's a lot of variables, once again, and we feel fortunate that we made it. We know that we made it through hard work, but we have, once again, a lot more hard work to do to continue to improve, and we know we're going to get there through our goals. We know we're going to get there through our assessment process that's improving. It's not where it needs to be there either, so we're working on that assessment piece, where we're getting a true gauge of that value-added data across the board with not just one subject, one subject and one assessment, but multiple data points. So that's the summary for now, and good news, but we need to keep working.
Thanks. The only other thing I'd like to add is, we all know that next month we need to get out and vote, so exercise your right to do that, no matter what you do, just please get to the polls. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Reenie? Okay, moving on, I think we can go back to Item 4 now, Student Liaison Update. Mrs. Innes?
All right. This month, we've invited Student Council President and Vice President from the high school to come talk and give an idea of the different projects that they do throughout the year, and our Vice President is here, Raymond Nickel.
All right. Student Council at the high school is very important. We have about 50 members, and each person is elected into office, and to, to attempt to be nominated, you have to fill out an application, you get two teacher recommendations, and you must get, I believe it's 50 signatures from people in your class, and then those are taken into account, and you have to write an essay, and you are voted by your class into office. And we have Vice President, President, Secretary, Treasurer, and Representatives. But once we all get elected into office, it's more so we all work together to get leadership into the community, or like our schools. And we have different committees, such as the Dance Committee, which is in charge of homecomings, May Days, getting decorations all set up for students to have fun, and then we have the Service Committee, which is in charge of blood drives, which we just had one recently, and it was a great success. We also have leadership conventions at other schools. We go, and once a year, we usually go over to Rocky River, which is a leadership convention there, and they have schools like Bay and Avon, and they're Rocky River Student Council, and we just discuss different topics to get ideas for our dances or blood drives, and ways to get students involved in the school.
Great. Before she walks away, does anybody have any questions? I should have said that before you got too far, Raymond. I was certain that somebody was going to say, "You're a lot closer than the elementary school kids to being grown up."
Yeah.
What are you going to be when you grow up?
Um, I don't know yet.
It's okay. It's okay. You can be, you can be 58 years old and not really know what you want to be when you grow up. Thanks, Raymond. Okay, our next item on the agenda, Item 6, we have listed as discussion items. I think it was left that way with nothing, just in case there was something to be added by Superintendent and Treasurer. Anything that we didn't discuss that you want to put on here? Okay. Then moving on, next item on the agenda, 7, is our public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If so, please come up to the podium, introduce yourself. I think there is somebody in the audience who gave something to Mr. Pemben that I think he would like to report for them, rather than them addressing the board. They preferred to do it in this manner. Mr. Pemben?
This item just came to me, and I have a previous item that I will go over as well. These were some more of his ideas, but Mr. Huffman's in the audience tonight and will be available to ask him any questions that he has about this document, but he asked me to read this, and this is addressed to the Vermillion Local School Board and its proposed Vermillion School future use. Vermillion Local Schools has six school buildings, which the school board, it seems, does not know what to do with. Number 1, South Street School. This property should be sold to Vermillion City for a city center. It could hold all areas of the five, present five buildings in use. Decatur Street School. This property should be used as the elementary school campus. Small children should not be near high school children. Lakeview School. This property should be split into two parcels. The building sold to the YMCA or the Vermillion Port Authority for the YMCA and other use. The land south of the building sold to Vermillion Park Board for a city park. Number 4, Beachview School. This property should be used for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, special ed class, special education, and other uses. Vermillion High School. This property should be used for all standard high school classes. 6, Sailor Way School. This property should be used for advanced post-high school and college-level classes. This is also the best place for the school board and superintendent's offices, presented by James Huffman, and he's a Vermillion resident. I'm just going to add that he did give me a breakdown of how the South Street property could be available for a city center, and he broke down the value of the property versus the estimated purchase price, and how the, that the city could sell off their buildings and really balance off the costs. So I, he asked me to talk to the mayor. I did make a call to Mrs. Beulyn, and we discussed his ideas recently, and he did drop this proposal off to the mayor so that she has a breakdown of what those costs could work out to be. So I'm going to pass this document around so that you could see this, as well as the other proposals, and he is in the audience this evening if you want to ask him any questions.
I think on that very topic, under Superintendent's report, we're going to be talking about facilities, so I think as you mull that over, the time to converse about that is when we get to that point in time in the meeting. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board? If not, moving on, Item 8, under Reports, the first one is the Treasurer's Report, and number 1 is a review of August 31st, 2012, and September 30th, 2012 financial reports.
These reports are attached with your agenda. I think, given that we have the five-year forecast to discuss briefly this evening, unless you have specific questions on the August or September month-end reports, I'll just leave those for your review, and we can take action to approve those next month.
Anybody have any questions on it? Prefer to do it through the five-year forecast? Okay, then moving on, the next item is Review of the Five-Year Forecast, and I think everyone should have a copy at their place. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
While you're pulling it out, I will just remind everybody that this is something that is due as a submission to the state by October 31st every year, and tonight's the night we will review and approve it first submitting.
And as Mr. Jordan said, there is a statutory obligation to submit that information. However, that's just one snapshot of the year. It continues to be a work in progress as the year goes through, and we know more things about our tax revenue, our state revenue. We really don't have a solid estimate of our student count or anything at this point that would allow us to really hone in on that number, and we still have some expense items that, that can evolve as utility prices for the winter and those situations become more known. In comparison to last year, in our operating funds, the district received in line 2.08, This year, we're scheduled to receive $22,339,700, and the primary differences in that are a moderate reduction in our basic state aid, as well as the loss of some additional reimbursements from the state for personal tangible property taxes, as well as electrical deregulation. So that's the primary cause of that reduction. Last year, for the 2012 year, our expenses were scheduled to be, were, our actual expenditures were $22,479,881. This year, we're forecasting just about $40,000 less than last year, and those are primarily in the areas of personnel costs, salary, and benefits. Line 6.01 is the key line that we watch as a tool and a red flag as to how we're doing with our planning, and that's the amount over or under our revenue that reflects our expenses. Right now, for the 2013 fiscal year, we're scheduled, if, the forecast would work out exactly as is, to spend $99,414 more than we're taking in. That's one of those things that we're so close that if we can get a few breaks here and there, we should break even, which is always, always our goal. Moving forward in 2014 through 17, you can see that we do begin to then deficit spend as we, in 2014, experienced some additional losses in state aid, as well as reimbursements for our, the property tax and the electrical, personal tangible property tax and the electrical deregulation. And that leaves us with a deficit spending of nearly $2 million, and that continues to increase through 2017 at $5,166,000. However, we're fortunate that through the reinvention plan, we have been able to maintain a cash balance that will carry us through that time period. Without consideration of our cash reserve, we have operating funds to get us through 2016, and with the consideration of the reserve, not quite through 2017. And that's assuming that we renew the existing emergency levy that is for, and for that same amount that currently exists, which would not be a new tax between that 2015 and 16 school year. With deducting the reserve amount, and that's one of the things that about 10, 12 years ago, when we came out of fiscal emergency, it was recommended that we do is establish a cash reserve. And at that point in time, the recommended amount that came from the Department of Education was just a little over $1.8 million, and we've continued to carry that as a voluntary reserve as a matter of district policy, board action at that time. And while we were quite progressive at the time to have that cash reserve policy in place, it's one thing with the volatility of school funding that you're seeing more and more recommendations from the Department of Education, Ohio School Boards for districts to establish that type of a benchmark to make sure that they are not going too low at any given time on their cash balances. So if you take that cash balance out in 2017 for the reserve, we would be about $860,000 in the red at that point in time. All of these projections also are, the numbers will look familiar, they're very similar to, they are the numbers that we have been working with as we've evaluated the facility project. This forecast is as, everything as it is right now. It doesn't include any adjustments for the facility project, so what will happen is, if the board votes to move ahead with that, that'll start the revisions going, and it could very well be that in early November, we would start submitting those revised numbers to the state to show where we are with that.
So just in looking at the numbers, if we were to vote on that tonight, and we'd start alleviating some of our properties, I would think immediately...
We do have the auction scheduled for South Street on Saturday. How that will go?
Yeah. And so it could start affecting us a positive way pretty quickly, so...
Correct.
Does this assume the continuation of the one-for-one initiative?
Yes, it does.
Okay. You just continued that payment out through 2017?
Right, right, or it just assumes continuation of our continuing programs, continuing staffing levels, all of those kinds of things.
It's going to be important to note that when we get on to the conversation about the facility project, those who were at last week's community meeting where it was laid out in detail, there's an aspect about the facility project that this five-year forecast is reflecting expenses that are higher than they should be because of the age of those buildings. The facility plan, when we get to that point in, in the agenda and we explain that, some of that money that people are going to question, it's already here, and whether we spend it to, to fix old buildings, or whether we spend it on financing of new lower maintenance...
Upgrades.
It's still money that we have to spend, no matter what.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's already built into this forecast.
Really thought that Dick Zangland's analogy during that was really pretty outstanding, the fact, I mean, we are a car town. We've always kind of grown up with the auto industry here, and, you know, when you look at, you know, driving around in the 1930s or 1960s cars, that's kind of what we're doing and trying to maintain those. And so that analogy really kind of, I think, was very fitting, so, and understanding the costs associated with maintaining those types of vehicles, so I thought it was a very good analogy, and...
I thought so, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you say the renewal was between 2015 and 16?
Yes.
I thought it was 16, 17.
Any other questions about the five-year forecast?
I'll just make one comment that's very encouraging through this, through this process. I know at first, in the first few years, we talked about having to put a levy on, I believe in 2014, and now that's been moved out two years later, so that's real encouraging looking at this forecast, where we've been able to extend that out even further.
Absolutely. The board's to be commended for all the work on that.
Well, you know, plus I challenge you to find any school district in the state of Ohio that is pushing it back this far. I mean, I, I, there's very few school districts in the state that can honestly say they can push up to 2016 without asking for money. I mean, I'd be shocked if you could find a handful that are in that situation, so...
I think that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, we went out with the reinvention plan in January of 2010, and we promised two years originally, and this is the third, this was an extra year this year, the 2013 school year, so actually, we would be extending it three additional years to 16. So total, it's, yeah, it's actually one extra year in addition to what...
Yeah, okay.
I think to those of us sitting at this table and keenly aware of how hard we scrutinize and push to be fiscally responsible, I don't think in our meetings or in the public, to what degree we've done that as a team, has been noticed. I just don't think it's been noticed, but I wish it was, and I commend this group, and I'm proud to serve with a group that has been this diligent and this much of a team to be able to pull that off, so, thank you all. If nothing else, the next item is recommend a resolution to approve the five-year forecast as presented, and I will move. One second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is to recommend a resolution to approve the following donations: $221.88 from the Vermillion Fire Company, Inc., to the VHS Cheerleaders; $1,000 from the Vermillion Fire Company, Inc., for the scoreboard; $500 from Oopsie Local 332 to the Sailor Way Playground Project.
Scoreboard on the football field?
Yeah. This is, every month, we have donations, but these ones, this month, are something to note, that Vermillion Fire Department, I say thank God that we have a town where there aren't tons of fires, because these guys spend a whole lot of time doing really good service and charitable work. The amount of fundraising they do and how much fun they have doing it, it's really a wonderful, wonderful thing, and for them to do all that and then give back, and the kids... And for them to do all that and then give back, and the kids, the students of the school district are the recipients, it's a wonderful thing. And our Opsy Union, I swear, once every three or four months, they're donating to something for students, and that's another thing to be very happy about. We thank them very much. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, the next item is superintendent's report, and item one is the facility project update. I know we have parts of, members of the team here, and we had a community meeting last Wednesday where there was a very full presentation in this very room, and we had a full house in this room for that. I think for the sake of our meeting tonight, which we televise, I'd like to, in an abbreviated format, recreate that if we could. Not necessarily the slideshow, but the people who spoke to give summary and have those people introduced. But I'm going to turn to Mr. Pemben, take it from here.
Okay, well, if we're trying to briefly recreate that, I welcome the audience. And as Mr. Jordan said, there was a good turnout. And what we talked about was how the project came about originally. There was a reinvention plan, and within the reinvention plan, as we talked about tonight, that put the district in a financial situation to be able to borrow ultimately money on the project. What we did, though, in the meantime, with that project and how it evolved was, we said that within that scope of the project, there was a one-last-thing stipulation that sought for us to consolidate once again. Within the reinvention plan, originally, we consolidated one building, which is South Street. And we are now in the process of auctioning that property off, or repurposing it for something else. And within the reinvention plan, we had a one-last-thing concept. The one-last-thing concept was a single campus plan. The single campus plan was brought to then a financial task force and a operations task force that was formed by the community at the request of the board. The board wanted this to be a community-led event and a community-led project. So that community task force, the operations and the financial task force banded together. They met, they came up with an idea for a project, they eventually narrowed it down to a $33 million bond-issue project that was bigger in scope than the project that we're now asking the public or think, or bringing to the public. We went out with a bond issue in November of 2011, but the economy did not permit that to be passed. And it, many people in the community thought it was a good idea, but the time just was not right. The task force went back to the task of coming back to the board with another idea. Is, was there another option? Was there another opportunity? And they found out that there was because of the financial condition that the district is in as a result of the reinvention plan. So that task force and the operations committee came back with that project of being a COPS-funded project that could be done in an alternative way. And it's a much pared-down project, it's a $20 million project. And at that point, I turned it over to Mr. Zangland, who is in the audience tonight, and if he could kind of give a summary, if he wouldn't mind on the spot, of, of what he said to the community.
You know, Mr. Zangland has put in tons of time in the last year as an independent community member in support of our district. I'm going to, I want to ask him to step up to the podium and be introduced. Speak to us from the podium, Mr. Zangland, and introduce yourself and then a.
More my vagina, isn't it? Good evening, thank you. In summary, you know, let's reflect back, this was a strategic plan that your organization took upon themselves to examine, as Mr. Rice liked my analogy of your fleet of automobiles. You had six of them. Your great-grandmothers, your grandmothers, your grandfathers. And you inherited your mothers' and your fathers'. And we're selling off, but hoping to preserve and have restored for a museum piece, the oldest one. Two of them, we think we can repurpose. You know, a recreation center, maybe a medical emergency facility, the Y running that so the city doesn't have to carry that overhead. One or two other sites could be great residential development lots. The market turning around and the demand for residences in Vermillion, those two properties would be ideal locations. As an ex-builder, I, my mouth drools over them. What we are going to give you, though, is take two of your automobiles into the shop, put new engines in, new transmissions, new brakes, new wheels, new air conditioners. And then we're going to buy and build for you a brand-new 40-mile-per-gallon Escort station wagon. That gets 50 miles to the gallon.
So focused now, but that's okay.
Got it? And we're not going to buy it, we're going to lease it. You know, this is just the work of your, your staff and your administration. You couldn't do it if you didn't have the numbers, and you've got the numbers to do that. So I hope that's satisfactory or whatever else. Thank you for letting me participate.
Thank you, Mr. Zangland.
The next part of the summary then was by, done by Rob Lashford, and he laid out what the project would look like. And Rob, if you wouldn't mind, come to the podium for a few minutes and just giving a brief summary then of what you were able to tell us about the project.
Sure, thank you. I, I first wanted to thank the board for allowing us to partner with you on this. It was said the other night that we've had over 60 meetings over the last two-plus years, so there's been a lot of hard work by your, your committees, and we appreciate you allowing us to be part of that. All we do is schools, and we still believe it's a noble cause. When you see the kids over there, coming up to the podium and the microphone and talking about what they want to be when they grow up, this is really what it's all about for us, so I appreciate that. We basically presented a number of items that would be in the $20 million project, beginning with the new K3 addition to the middle school. Working with the committee, we examined all the different places that you could put an addition on the site and even around the, the middle school. And it was determined that on the west side would be the best place to put an addition because we wouldn't infringe on any of the existing facilities, such as the softball field and the baseball field and some of the parking over there. And so that was $11 million for a 44,000-square-foot K3 addition. And another really important thing that, that we've been tracking since the very beginning, it's come up a number of times, we know it's, it's critical in that site circulation. So part of doing that, that addition is to really look hard at site circulation. We know that that's an issue. In some of the preliminary plans, we showed, you know, a road going around the, the middle school, and we're also going to potentially look at coming out onto Route 60 with a, with a new exit. So all those things, we're going to be taking a look at at the same time as we, as we proceed. The other item I talked about was, which is really important to, to your savings, is upgrades at the middle high school for energy savings. And as Dick said, we're going to look at the transmissions and the air conditioning, and we're going to put new controls in the, in the two existing buildings. We're going to upgrade the lighting, we're going to replace some rooftop units, and also look at a central campus transformer, which all of these things will help save you energy over time. And then as we look at each individual building, the middle school renovations, we're going to replace all of the windows and doors and repair the lintels that are above the, above the windows in the middle school. There's some issues with foundation drainage over at the middle school, we're going to take care of that, and some exterior stairs that need to work on. What we did was, we looked at all the priority items that we had to hit immediately. And then we're also going to reprogram some space, about 12,000 square feet of space in the existing building, and do general finishes. Paint all the walls, replace carpeting and tile and ceiling tile. And also at the high school, we're going to look at the same type of things, window and door replacement. And at the high school, we're going to reprogram about 25,000 square foot of space. The majority of that space would be over on the, the west side of the building, kind of northwest side of the building, where we know that your choir, your band, the, the space that they need is a little more than they have. And there's also some space around there that's not used as efficiently as it could. So we're going to, to reprogram that space, and we'll also look at the general finishes in that building, too. So all told, that comes to about $20 million. It's really a great project, I think, and very efficient in dealing with your needs and, and of course, bringing everyone to one campus, this will allow you to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Well, I think I'd like to turn to Mrs. Hendricks to summarize the dollars and cents of this.
Initially, when we started looking at the lease program, we had investment analysts look at what type of debt or lease amount we could look at based on our estimated operating savings by being able to consolidate to the single campus. Then savings alone was able to support payments for a debt issuance of $17.5 million. And that was one of the numbers that we talked about at our meeting on the 29th, and also had also, had mentioned at that point in time that we were awaiting numbers on the energy efficiency project to see if we could achieve some additional dollars from those savings. That allowed us to move that total number for the project up to $20 million. So that's a combination of operational savings and energy savings with that. We're also have, based on comparison with the bond, have shortened the debt term considerably rather than a 35-year that we would be paying off a bond issue that was originally proposed. We're back to a 25-year maturity or payment term on the lease purchase agreement. They're called certificates of participation or COPS. It's a type of financing that has been used by city government, county governments, and other types of political subdivisions for a long, long time, but just probably in the last five years has started to become more common for school districts, though still relatively new. We're hoping that the interest rate will continue to be favorable for us, and right now, it looks like we could be at a rate of about 3.7% all-in by the time the deal closes. Hopefully, we can even get a little bit better than that. So some of these numbers, the final numbers, are not going to be set until we actually have the, the item closed, the financing closed, and the final interest rates that are in place at that point in time. But after we make the payments for the lease over that time, in looking at our five-year forecast and the savings, it appears that we should actually be saved, have a net savings of just about $100,000 a year, even after we pay that debt off because of the operating savings as well as the energy reductions. So I think that that is something that we're not going to need to ask for additional operating money sooner. We're not asking for additional tax revenue to get those buildings in place. I think it's a great idea for our community, and in many ways, when we talk about the age of the cars, again, we might almost be able to say that we're, would be taking a greater risk with our operating dollars not to move forward because we could have a lot of unexpected repairs that could come in as those buildings age. And also, by moving into the centralized campus, we're able to actually put ourselves in the position that we can minimize our, our costs and be as efficient as possible and can more nimbly make adjustments as future financing challenges could, could come about. But I think it's a very solid and sound program.
Completion time, what we looking at?
It would be an accelerated timeline if this would get approved. We would be looking at the possibility of breaking ground as early as April or May of this 2013 school year, and then having the project completed by the end of August of 2014. So we would be in the new addition with some of the renovations being done, not all, by 2014, 15 school year, and then the remaining renovations would need to be completed during breaks and the following summer of the 2015 school year. So it would be definitely an accelerated timeline, and a lot of work would have to be done, a lot of planning, a lot of thinking, and we'd have to get to it quick. But not so quickly that we're rushing. We, we have to be sure that the communication is the key with, with all of this and hearing staff input, community input.
Have you guys looked at construction managers on this yet, or no?
We've talked about it, not in depth. I know that we had that conversation as a board one time earlier when we were looking at the $33 million bond project. And at that time, when we were looking at the larger scope of a project, we talked about the possibility of a, of a construction manager overseeing the project. The discussion needs to be had now. Do we still want to, to have that type of person in charge of this project? If so, what's the scope? How, how large of a company are we looking for? We'd have to put out an RFP, a request for proposal for a firm that would then have to bid that part or that aspect of the job. Lesco does have the op, have, have the capacity or the ability to do that at a reduced, I, I don't know what the fee is. Rob, have you established what the fee would be if you would take on that part of the project? Is that a set number?
Well, it depends on the scope of the, 22%. They're able to do that in the past.
And in general?
And how much over 10%.
In, in general, I'm not sure at this point what the exact cost until we would put out an RFP for a construction management firm would be their fee. So we'd have to compare what he just said to a construction management firm, see what they have to offer, talk to the architects, compare what they're doing, compare what it is.
So we're looking at Lesco's architects still, correct?
Correct.
And moving forward, you know, I, I think there's a bit of a checks and balance to having a, another firm involved as the construction manager. That's just my opinion. I, you're in this business, I mean, what are your thoughts?
I, before, let me interrupt, because, Tim, I have spoken to this many times, but I, I just want to point out, Dave, you brought up a good point. I think we, as a board, all discussed in the past, maybe, I don't know if you were on the board at the time, Mrs. Ennis, but of, of the other four members, I, correct me if I'm wrong.
This is an important piece of the whole thing.
We all, we all thought that was a key component.
Yeah.
That when we got there. So right now, we have a $20 million budget.
We're there.
And within that $20 million, there's some breakdown. We, I think, with nods of heads here, would encourage administration to follow that path when allocating the $20 million. So I think that's the direction. I, what'll happen, and is tonight, we have on our agenda a resolution to go forward with the financing. The details of the allocation of that $20 million is open for discussion at, at all future meetings as we progress. So it's not like today, it's all written in stone.
So it's not open for discussion tonight?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I was really just, rather than discussing it, I was kind of jumping the gun, looking for a nod of heads because we discussed in the past, all agreed, I thought that it was a good plan. And in the process of. I thought that it was a good plan, uh, and in the process of, at, at another time, a full description of what that really means, if you would like that, Mrs. Ennis, uh, and then you have a comment about it at a future meeting, that, that still is down the road. So, I mean, if, if we want to talk about it right now, we're fine too. We're wide open to.
I think the important thing to remember is that this is going to be all gone through, the whole, the whole plan as, as the project moves along. Not only who's involved, but what's involved. I mean, even the things that Rob said tonight are, can change, or I mean, we may come up with it a little different or a better idea, and it'll all keep changing. So, this is just to get the financing portion of it going, getting going so we can continue with the project.
Kind of the same topic. Did we include like furnishings and all those kind of things in the twenty million dollars?
In the new area, is that correct, Rob?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
New addition is, is a turnkey, basically, as they say, is completely furnished, ready to go.
Okay. I just don't want to get to the end of this and like, I, we have another half million dollars.
No chairs to sit.
Smart boards, chairs, and, you know, that whole thing.
At our community meeting last week, there was a comment from the community, uh, how certain are you of the dollar amount and, and overruns on the project? And there was lengthy discussion at that point in time about that.
Could we include paving, engineering, all that kind of stuff, traffic studies?
You have some contingencies in for the soft, we included the soft costs which include these fees that you're talking about with construction management into the twenty million dollars.
Rob, clarify though, a little bit, when you say turnkey, that includes furniture, but that's not a technology package, so to speak, with new technology in it, is it?
Well, the technology in terms of all your, your wireless, you're, you're going wireless. We have all the, the technology system in there. We didn't include buying computers, uh, so it's...
So, so we would be leaving everything as far as wireless and all that's in the other schools right now and just putting it all new?
New addition, that's what we have costed for. But we'll evaluate those things as we're, we're going along to see if there's anything we can do certain, but we want it to be safe in, uh, doing our estimates.
So, the wireless is included in the package and the... And, and the setup for the use of the wireless, no computers or, or smart boards either. Smart board is usually a extra...
Probably a smart board.
Auxiliary.
Yeah, we could bring, some of that stuff you would think.
Yeah.
I, I think...
That's my point. I just want to clarify that we will be able to bring some of that with us. And so, I just don't want the thought that, though, we're, we're replacing every smart board with a new smart board.
Do we have any money or we thought about, I, I'm sure we're going to, because of safety with kindergarten through third graders now walking as close as they have to, on sixty to get in the saleway, do we have any money there that maybe we can help the city out to redesign sidewalks and crossing patterns and, but...
I'll speak to that, I think, that, that the Safe Routes to School grant. There's still a large, open-ended dollar amount there waiting for us to have a concrete plan. We see the sidewalks have gone in, but there's two more years, correct me if I'm wrong, of that grant. And we're ripe right now, if we go forward with this, to quickly structure something and go to them. And if the Safe Routes to School grant can pay for a percentage of it, that's that much of the approximate, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, a, a million dollars of the eleven million dollars was allocated to that exterior, I think.
Site circulation.
Yeah. For traffic.
At some point, can we talk to somebody from Safe Routes just to see what, uh, what their plan kind of encompasses? Does it go as far north as the railroad tracks? Now, we're going to have little kids walking south of the tracks. We've got to cut across sixty.
I was at, I went to their meetings, a couple of meetings a few years ago and met with them, with the, um, Vermillion Township. And there's, there's a multitude of plans. It didn't, it involved the railroad tracks, it involved all the way up to, um, the crossing at, uh, by convenient. You know, how, how kids should cross at that street. It involved all the railroad crossings. It, like Mr. Jordan said, it's really open-ended and there are a lot of different plans. It's just figuring out what's the most important thing to do and, and the best way to propose it to, to them for their approval.
And remember that when it started, it was the township and the city applying for the grant. They're the political entity that applies for it, but they both turned to us for guidance and input, which remains to this day. And in answer to your question, absolutely, if we go forward, if we vote to go forward tonight with step one, then immediately, a meeting should be set up. And, and then we turn to Mrs. Hendricks, who has been in communication with them, to arrange that. And whoever wanted to sit in.
That was obviously a very big concern. I'm glad you brought it up, Dale, because, you know, look at Valley View, there's just no sidewalk for the most part for kids walking to school. Their only options are walk in the street for the mo, you know? So, it's a big, big concern, so we, we, we have to address it.
Absolutely.
Some of the main feedback that I got after the meeting, the community meeting, was that aspect. And what I would suggest besides us meeting with Safe Routes would be to immediately hold a community meeting just primarily focused on the topic of transportation.
That's a good idea. City council, you know?
Invite the city council, invite anyone that wants to come and hear about what the possibility, what the options are, what the thoughts are. So, I would like to...
So, should we decide to pull the plug on this? What are our options later? We vote on this right now?
On the whole project, you mean?
Yeah, correct.
If you change your mind to not go through with the project?
If, if, if we can't, we're getting some of these things logistically worked out.
The financing we have up until the twenty-ninth of October is our tentative date that we have set for the sale of the issue. So, at that point in time, we would have the financing in place and the funds would be starting to, to flow at this point. If we would stop at sometime after that, I'm sure there would be some sort of terms as far as repayment. Without doing the project, I, I would have to do some checking to see what those are. But initially, October twenty-ninth is the date of the tentative sale.
When you said three point seven percent, I'm assuming that's fixed, right?
Yes.
Okay. One other question. Since most of the financing is energy savings related, and we've talked a couple of times about having some real hard measurables, how can we accomplish that? I know we've done projects in the past, house bill plans, we've never say we're going to save X amount of dollars. Three years later, I don't think we, do we really know if we saved X amount of dollars? I, I think that really important that if we say we're going to...
Yeah, and, and at the last meeting, we said that. I, I thi, I think we as a board made it crystal clear that, that in the house bill portion of this project, we want, whoever we do it with, we want guarantees, measurable guarantees of that we will achieve that.
The process that they're going to, they're, they're going to show us their measurables and a guarantee that we're going to reach these.
A, a big thing that's happened and now today, and Rob will probably tell you too, is a lot of these projects are done with a commissioning agent. And his, and his job, his purpose is to look at all the things that you're doing, the lights, the energy, the air conditioning, the heating, the insulation, and he comes in and if they say there's supposed to be ten inches insulation in the wall of the ceiling, he verifies, yep, there is. And if, and all the lights and so on, the, the air conditioning, they, they monitor and go through that. I don't think that they, that they give you so much of a guarantee, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm sure somebody would give you a guarantee at a cost, but if, if you have someone overlooking that and monitoring that, what the engineers have designed, this guy is, is a, is someone that's double checking and making sure, yep, they put in this system and it's the way it's supposed to be. All the controls are working, um, it's going to save you X. You'll, you'll, you'll have documentation of that. Uh, they're usually released probably like a year after the project. They'll go through, make a commissioning report and make a punch list and they'll, they'll be gone once everything's done. But I think that would be more bang for your buck, so to speak, to have someone like that, you know, overseeing the project.
Just...
I was just going to say, we certainly do all the energy calculations with our engineers, but you've also had an independent, uh, firm, Jeff Hunter, looking at all of your, your energy and the energy savings and making recommendations to us as well. So, you've had an independent third party looking at that already.
And he's not someone who comes in and does the work, so he wouldn't have any interest in that type of...
And I, I think probably where Dale and I have, really the point we were making is the last House Bill two sixty-four project that was really analyzed presentation to the board, in the end, we didn't go forward with the project. But that last firm did within their proposal guarantee it. There was, there were, there were dollars tied to it.
And, and I think that that's one of the things that we would have to evaluate going forward is what type of additional funds we may be paying to receive those types of guarantees.
Absolutely. And, and as we said before, the whole twenty million is in state of flux. We should evaluate that.
Make a part of the RFP, goes out. Then I guess the last question I've got is, I, I think we touched on it earlier with the plan for the other buildings. So, if we go forward with this, you know, yet we're creating another vacant building, a VES sitting over there on Decatur Street. So, we had VES and nothing happens with South Street, we've got Lake already. Um, we've got to really come up with a concrete plan for these buildings. If two years from now it ends in a demo, that's a plan. But we've got to come up with a plan instead of just sitting, letting these buildings sit around town vacant with, without a direction. You know, if it, I think Dick's talking about moving the city administration over there with the YMCA, some kind of combination. Um, maybe we need to get that rolling and really have some serious talks with the city and talk with the Y, have them come up with a business plan and, and let's see if we can get this moving instead of having another building sitting empty. Bottom line, if we can't make that happen, the numbers don't work, right?
We would have minimal expense in maintaining VES at this point, but the plan is that it would not be empty. That's correct.
I, I think that Dale just expresses something that in the past, this board unanimously said, absolutely, we don't want them to sit. And, um, I think appropriate at this time to say that the twenty-five thousand square foot at the high school that's going to be repurposed has the potential for us to possibly close this building and the board operations be moved into a section of space over there. The savings that would come from that are not written in yet.
Correct.
And if it happens, that adds this building to that list of, of, we want disposition. But I think the bottom line is South Street's set for auction this weekend. We're required by law to step one in the sale of our, our real property, to have auction. That is this Saturday. The, the results of that will come back to us, um, and then we make decisions from there. All the other buildings won't become free until that, that two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. And that's the point in time we'll be, um, required to do the initial process of, of, if we're not going to use it ourselves, to start with the legal requirement of an auction, so.
I think Mr. Dawson's point, I heard Mr. Zangland say the same thing. These properties, some of these may be even more valuable without the buildings on them at all, though. I mean, that, and that's certainly something...
Specifically this one, yeah.
Yeah, something to consider as we go down the road. And we, and I'm sure the board will, you know?
What we can do immediately is, is make sure that we have a sustainable business plan to bring before the board from the Y. The CEO has met with us as we have said at another meeting, and if they have a, we need to see their plan. What, what can they do to say that they could sustain that as a community center?
I, and I think that this board has expressed in the past that we want to be on the path to be out of...
Right.
The landlord tenant business.
Well, the plan should not include a lease.
So, if they, if they in fact have a sustainable plan, they figure out how to finance and buy that from us or some kind of arrangement to transfer ownership.
Right. We, we've told them that we're not interested in sustaining a lease. That, that would not be, that cannot be part of whatever plan that...
I mean, ideally, VS is a much better property for them, you would think. The newer windows and much bigger gym. I mean, just the facility itself is far superior to like school. And, you know, my biggest concern is really what is the YMCA's commitment to Vermillion long-term? Or is this a short ster, short-term stopgap just till they can go wherever they want to go, so.
Ideally, they said it's not, but we'd need to see that in writing.
I, I can tell you that I've sat in at least three meetings with them and the same words were repeated each time. That whether or not in any of these Vermillion locations, um, none of them are likely fitting the model of a YMCA major center with a swimming pool and the whole rec facility. But they described a, the Y that's been around forty years in Parma that has the swimming pool. They have created right in and around that area what they called satellites or YMCA express locations, something like that. And they, in all the meetings I sat, said, our intention is to remain with that thought in Vermillion. No matter which location is the best, they remain with that thought. So, they still, at this point, think that the Vermillion Elementary School building is the, the ideal location for them.
Okay. So, tonight, we're looking at approving the financing. So, the final plan for the actual, what's going to happen is somewhere down the road, we're going to meet in committees and all that kind of stuff. Okay. Because I'd still like to see more bang for a buck in the high school. I know we, we don't have a lot of saleaway for the high school. I'd like to see us do a little bit more, but... And saleaway, I mean, you know? I know it's not what we want, but it's what we can afford, so.
Well, you know what, I want to, I want to talk to that point because this, other than traffic, the other biggest thing that I heard, and I think some of you heard it also, was the question, if you're able to do it this way, then why did you go on the ballot for a bond issue in the first place? The answer to that question is that that was the best way we knew how at that time. On election eve, when we were sitting that night watching the returns come in and saw that the, we were not successful, Mr. Zangland said, "Well, what do we do now? The need does not go away. We're going to have to get very creative to solve this."
Well, you know, it's...
That, let, let me finish. That coupled with, that coupled with two more years of the reinvention plan creating savings, now of a sudden, our organization's financial position is, uh, it's an attractive thing to those people that we're talking to to finance, whereas it wasn't four years ago. And I think the number that was thrown out to me, ninety percent of school districts in the state are not in that financial position, would not be attractive to investors. We just happen to be. So, the pieces have fallen together.
I, I think when you say we, you know, I think i- i- it really so much wasn't we, it was really the community members that made up this committee that made these decisions. So, uh, it's what they proposed to the board, here's what we think you should do, uh, and we ran with that. And, uh, and I think that's the important thing, you know? This is, this is more driven...
You're right.
But it's been really the community members that have made these decisions and what they think we should move forward with, with the, with the help and assistance providing the numbers and the data of, of future populations and that type of thing within our school. So, uh, you know, we are part of them and I appreciate those community members that are here tonight and the work they've put in. And, and this is what's been great about this for me as a board member, that, you know, we weren't the driving force behind this. The, the community, the citizens of this town were the driving force behind all these recommendations. And that's what's, I think, most important, I think, to the people in the public that are, you know, listening to this vote tonight. And you look at the savings that we're being able to do without asking for a nickel from the, from the people in the public, so. It's hard as a board member to sit back and say, this doesn't make sense. Some people would have to look at me and say, what, what are you thinking? You're saving money without, you know, coming to us, so.
The thing I threw in last week at the community meeting was just closing... The thing I threw in last week at the community meeting was, just closing the elementary school saves four hundred thousand dollars a year. Just, just by doing that and coming over and, and moving those students into the Saylor Way school, that, that's a big savings. I mean, that's a big number. You know, over the next ten, that's four million dollars in ten years. That's huge.
I just wanted to make the point that, answer that question. That was, I brought it up. In summary?
I think we did.
Okay, okay. Then moving on, the next item is to recommend a resolution to authorize certificates of participation financing for the facility project as presented, attachment B. And it is the multi-page financing resolution that we had available to us at the last meeting. I trust everyone's had plenty of time to review and ask questions if they had since then. I will move. Any other discussion on this? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reenie?
I abstain.
The next item is recommend a resolution to authorize survey services as recommended by Lesko Associates. This is in attachment C. I will move.
One second.
Want to give a quick explanation?
Rob, help me.
We sent down the request for proposal, so we got some responses from a number of firms. And we had a different range of, of costs coming for that, but the company that we're proposing, they would be the lowest and the most responsible bidder that, for those services. You've got about eighty acres. There was a, a real low bid, and we contacted that, that firm, and they had based on errors in their, their calculations. So they, they withdrew their bid, but after talking to them, I feel that they're competent and they're ready to go. That's a, it's a critical step in terms of the planning for the site.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is the grouping of items that we as a board, because of regular business, handle them in this way. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any board member would like to have a poll for discussion?
I'll move the consent agenda as it's written.
One second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, our next item is date and location of upcoming board meetings. Thursday, November eighth is been moved because of the conference in Columbus. Is that date still good with everyone?
Did we check the school calendars, any concert or singing going on like that? Are you getting near program season here?
I know a couple of months ago when we set this date, we really scrambled to find a day that everybody could make.
It's good for me.
I'm good. What date is that?
November eighth.
It's a Thursday.
I'm not showing.
While you're looking, the other, the next three beyond that, December, January, I'm sorry, the next two, December tenth and January fourteenth, they are scheduled on our regular second Monday. Are those still looking good for everybody? Okay.
And Dale, I think that's, that's the lag there, because this one season's you're just ending and the, the new season's picking up, so.
Any choir concerts and stuff like that?
The high school choirs this, this week.
Is it this week?
Yeah.
Not showing anything.
Okay.
It's probably the slowest week that we have.
Yeah, end of the month, I'm just starting.
We did discuss, within the last week, the need for a special meeting. We wanted to have a special meeting that really dove in in great detail in discussion, follow-up discussion that we haven't achieved on superintendent's goals for the school year and the treasurer's goals. I met with Mr. Pimpin' just this last week, and Mr. Rice happened to stop in, and that was part of the conversation. We think that it would be good to have a meeting to discuss that in detail a week from today. And if, if anyone has a reason that we can't, I'd like to look at dates beyond next Monday, that we may be able to.
Next Monday works for me.
Have a special meeting.
Truck task force is at five, I was going to go to that. If we're at seven, I, I bet we're good. We should be done by then, yeah.
Mrs. Ennis, do you think, next Monday? Okay, that is the twenty-second? So let's add in here a regular, a special meeting for Monday, October twenty-second at seven PM?
Here.
Here. Now, let me add, I did have conversation with Mr. Pimpin' today, that we are in the month that it is our goal, and there's a couple of us here on this board who've been passionate about this, to get contracts resolved in advance of the time period, especially supplemental contracts. So I did have conversation today with Mr. Pimpin' to ensure that by, if in fact necessary, any supplementals that are for the winter season, that we'll have those by next week to ensure that they're done in advance. So that, that item, those types of items might be put on if necessary.
Lot of them are going through, though, I didn't.
Yeah, well, a lot of them have, but quite frankly, I don't think any of us, as they come piecemeal, we don't know. We have to turn to staff to look at the full master list and be certain.
I appreciate your work in trying to clean this up. I see the emails and.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that we all understand what the expectation is.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item here is item twelve, other businesses may come before the board. Is there anything else that has been talked about at last minute that we weren't able to put onto the agenda? That's necessary tonight?
I don't have anything on my end.
Okay, I, I don't have anything either. And as long as no one else, then the next item, thirteen, is, can I hear a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.